And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please be seated.
Our invocation tonight will be given by Pastor David Doster of Burke Community Bible Church.
Thank you so much. When the invitation to pray this evening was presented to me about three or four weeks ago, immediately what jumped off the page was the date of December the 7th. And knowing that this marks the 74th anniversary of that significant day in the life of our history. And then I learned earlier today that you folks will have an opportunity to honor Mr. Beam for his service. And so that adds to the richness of this evening as well as praying. As you transition, and we have new leadership, including Mayor Thompson. So I want to both commend you, and encourage you, and challenge you as you step up to continue to lead this community. And I know I speak for many in our community, our citizens, when I say we appreciate and value your service, continue to stand strong in the interesting and challenging days in which we live. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come with humble hearts and grateful hearts. Humble as we consider the richness and vastness of blessings that you have poured out upon us as the people of this community, the city of Morganton, and even the surrounding Burke County. We have much to be grateful for, Lord, even with all of the challenges and issues that confront us. And so our hearts are full, and yet we come and we make intercession this evening, realizing, Lord, that you have ordained government, and that those who would seek to lead us, even here in our community. And so we pray for all of the city council, including Mayor Thompson. And we recognize the transition that will unfold in the days and weeks and months and years ahead. We ask God that you would grant to them wisdom, an ability to see the issues, and rightly discern what needs to be done, and give them the strength, the courage, and the fortitude to make even at times difficult decisions that have implications for the thousands who live in this community and the surrounding area. Lord, we pray for your protection over them, and that you would lead them. And we're mindful of the words even spoken to Moses years ago, when it says, "Moreover, look for able men from all the people, men who fear God, who are trustworthy, and hate a bribe, and place such individuals over the people as chiefs of thousands of hundreds of fifties and tens." So, Lord, we pray that you would guard their integrity, that you would protect them in that right. We pray, Lord, for your blessing over them and over the leadership that they will provide this community in the days ahead. We're mindful, Lord, even also of this day, of many who have gone before, including even there at Pearl Harbor. We think of those who have made the ultimate sacrifice, and those who have even now served us in foreign lands. We pray for their families while they are separated from their loved ones. And we ask God that you would minister your grace and comfort and strength to them as well. We thank you for any and all, both military as well as police, who every day, Lord, stand and seek to uphold the laws of our land, to promote that which is good, to restrain evil. And so, Lord, we thank you for this night. We pray over all that will unfold over these next moments, and we ask your blessing over this leadership, as well as our community, as we consider all of your gifts, most especially the gift of your Son, the Lord Jesus, in whom's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much, Reverend Doster. I'd like to now introduce Judge Robert Irvin, who will swear in our new mayor and councilman.
Put your left hand on the Bible, raise your right. And when I say the word "I," that signifies you to give us your full name. You ready?
Yes.
I?
Ronald Moore Thompson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And maintain.
And maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitutions and laws of the state of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As mayor.
As mayor.
Of the city of Morganton.
The city of Morganton.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thanks.
Do solemnly swear. I?
I. Forrest A. Fleming.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And maintain.
And maintain.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the state of North Carolina.
Of the state of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As councilman.
As councilman.
Of the city of Morganton.
Of the city of Morganton.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Repeat after me. I?
I, Sidney Simmons.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And maintain.
And maintain.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the state of North Carolina.
Of the state of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As councilman.
As councilman.
Of the city of Morganton.
Of the city of Morganton.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge.
Judge Irvin, thanks so much. I know you have to go swear some more people in, so thank you so much for your service. Thank you again. This time I'd like the newly elected councilmen, who've just been sworn in, to make any comments. Forrest Fleming, would you like to make any comments, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very humbled and appreciative to the citizens of Morganton for giving me the opportunity to serve you again for the next four years. I pledge to you that I will work hard to keep Morganton a great place to live, work, raise a family, and enjoy the various amenities offered by the city. Your prayers for a successful four years would be greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Forrest. Councilman Simmons, would you like to add some comments?
Yes, sir. I'd like to thank the citizens of this community for their continued support and their vote of confidence. I pledge to work as hard as I can in hopes that I don't disappoint you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Forrest and Sidney. My comments would be that I'd like to thank all the citizens who actually voted in this last election. You know, contested elections are a vital part of government, so the citizens can decide who they want to lead this community. I appreciate the people who supported me and feel honored and humbled to be your mayor. Mel Cohen led this community for 30 years, and his efforts of hard work can be seen every time you drive or walk in this community. We all owe him a debt of gratitude for his wisdom and guidance in the past. I want to thank Judge Irvin for his services tonight. His service to the judicial community is evident. He's had some very diverse court cases lately, and we're glad that he could be with us tonight to do this installation. I want to thank the staff for their comments as we make this transition. They've been very supportive, and I look forward to working with them as we continue to make Morganton a great place to live and work. I look forward to working with the other members of the council. John, Forrest, and Sidney all have many years of experience, and I feel that by working together, we can tackle those difficult decisions that we will face in the very near future. Lastly, I'd like to thank my wife, who has been patient and understanding for the past 38 years, and extremely patient for the past 11 months. People asked during the campaign if she would be involved, and I'm here to tell you, she can put up a large campaign sign in five minutes and take it down in two minutes or less, so she has been very active. Again, I want to thank all those who voted. Now it's time for us to work and continue the progress in this city. Thank you so much. It's time that we elect a mayor pro temp. Do I have any nominations?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate John Cantrell as mayor pro temp.
Have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. John Cantrell, congratulations as mayor pro temp.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Setting of the meeting time and date. I have a recommendation to have the meeting date on the first Monday of each month, excluding July at 6:00 P.M. Do I have a motion to accept that?
So move.
Have a second? Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. The appointment of standing committees by the mayor. Under finance, it would be Ronnie Thompson and Sidney Simmons. Personnel will be Forrest Fleming and Sidney Simmons. The streets will be John Cantrell and Forrest Fleming, and under utilities, Forrest Fleming and John Cantrell. At this time, we do have a very special guest with us. We have a proclamation honoring Blanche Beam and all other Pearl Harbor survivors and World War II veterans. And I'm not going to ask Mr. Beam to stand. We'll ask him to stand in just a minute, but this proclamation reads, "Whereas today, December 7, 2015, is the 74th anniversary of the day of infamy, the attack on Pearl Harbor in 1941, which brought the United States into World War II. And whereas the survivors of Pearl Harbor joined with other members of the Greatest Generation to fight and win the Second World War, and thereby not only preserved our American freedoms, but also delivered the entire world from the nightmare atrocities of Nazi Germany, imperialist Japan. And whereas those still living Pearl Harbor survivors and other World War II veterans are today especially deserving of public recognition and honor. And whereas Mr. Blanche Beam of Morganton, currently 99 years of age, was present on shipboard on December 7, 1941, as a sailor in the United States Navy, served in the Navy throughout the war, rising to the rank of chief petty officer, and is believed to be the only remaining Pearl Harbor survivor in Burke County. And whereas the mayor and city council of Morganton wish to particularly honor and recognize Blanche Beam for his service on this anniversary, of his participation in the defense of Pearl Harbor, Hawaii, against surprise attack, and for his noble service throughout the war. And whereas Blanche Beam stands as a representative of all of those in our community who served with honor in the United States Armed Forces during World War II. Now therefore, on behalf of the city of Morganton and by action of the city council, I, Ronnie Thompson, as mayor, do hereby proclaim December 7, 2015, as a day to celebrate and honor Blanche Beam, and do hereby recognize the faithful and honorable service of Blanche Beam to his country during the attack on Pearl Harbor and throughout World War II. And further, do proclaim the grateful thanks and appreciation of the city to all those in our community who served in the United States Armed Forces during World War II. Issued on the 7th day of December, 2015, Ronnie Thompson, mayor, attested Sally Sandy clerk." I'm going to ask Councilman Forrest Fleming if he'll present this resolution to Mr. Beam.
And as an old retired command sergeant major out of the Army, I consider it a privilege to make this presentation to a Navy man.
Your son, David, we appreciate you bringing Blanche to us. We nearly survived Pearl Harbor. We weren't sure he could survive a city council meeting. So if you need to leave or would like to make any comment, David, please do so.
Well, Dad just wanted to wish you better luck than the first inauguration that he attended. That was in 1928. He was at Herbert Hoover's inauguration. Better luck!
Thanks. I would like to pitch in for our local high schools. I know some members of their band are going to Pearl Harbor on next December to play in the 75th anniversary. So if any kind souls would like to make a contribution to our school system so those band members could go celebrate and represent Burke County, it would be greatly appreciated. To introduce the council, on my far right, Forrest Fleming, city council. Louis Vina, our town attorney. I'm Ronnie Thompson, your mayor. Sally Sandy, our city manager. Sid Simmons, our city council, and John Cantrell, mayor pro temp. Kelly Russell is our clerk, and Becky Brinkley is doing our introductions and translation, interpreting for the deaf. We have two retiree resolutions. I'm not sure that those retirees are here, but I would like to read those resolutions. Our first resolution is honoring Michael J. Ferraro III. Whereas Michael J. Ferraro III was employed by the city of Morganton as public safety officer in the Public Safety Department on July 28, 1997, promoted to public safety officer one on September 21, 1998, promoted to sergeant on April 6, 2002. And whereas Michael J. Ferraro III has faithfully served the city of Morganton in the Public Safety Department, and has given of his time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of North Carolina for 30 years, and city of Morganton for 18 years and 3 months. And whereas Michael J. Ferraro III retired from the city of Morganton as sergeant in the Public Safety Department on December 1, 2015. And whereas the Morganton city council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Michael J. Ferraro III, and express their appreciation for a job well done. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city of Morganton that the mayor present this resolution to Michael J. Ferraro III, adopted this 7th day of December, 2015. Ronnie Thompson, I'm sorry, Mel Cohen, mayor, and Sally Sandy clerk, do I have a motion?
So move.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion is to adopt this resolution honoring Michael J. Ferraro. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a resolution honoring Ronald W.?
To declare his weapon surplus first, if we can, and purchase that.
Okay. Historically, we do follow the North Carolina statutes and award a retiring member for their service weapon. We do need council action. The motion would be to declare a surplus, the Glock Model 20, .40 caliber, serial number XHY519, and fire services helmet, sale, and present to retired Sergeant Ferraro. Do I have that motion?
So move.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sally?
Now pay the dollar. Sorry.
We also have a resolution honoring Ronald W. Coleman. Whereas Ronald W. Coleman was employed by the city of Morganton as a truck driver in the Public Works Sanitation Department on September 8, 1987, promoted to equipment operator one on February 16, 1989, transferred to truck driver on September 10, 1992, promoted to sanitation department supervisor one on July 29, 1995, promoted to sanitation department superintendent on June 26, 1997. And whereas Ronald W. Coleman has faithfully served the city of Morganton in the Public Works Sanitation Department, and has given of his time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of Morganton for 30 years and 2 months. Whereas Ronald W. Coleman retired from the city of Morganton as superintendent of Public Works Sanitation Department on December 1, 2015. And whereas the Morganton city council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Ronald W. Coleman, and express their appreciation for a job well done. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city of Morganton that the mayor present this resolution to Ronald W. Coleman, adopted this 7th day of December, 2015. Mel Cohen, mayor, and Sally W. Sandy, city clerk. Those presentations were made at a letter date. They were not able to attend the city council meeting tonight.
Can we get a motion and a second, please?
Yeah, I need a motion for Ron and Coleman.
So move.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kelly. Okay, public advocacy. Sally?
We have an announcement that you all probably want to make about the council vacancy and the seat, and the process that you are going through. Or I'm happy to do that.
Go ahead, Sally.
Okay. The District 4 seat is now vacant, and the council has decided to go through an application process. Applications are currently being taken, and will be accepted through the close of business on December the 15th. Anyone living in that district that is a registered voter is eligible to apply. There is an application form that can be picked up either from Kelly's office, or it is available online, and they can be returned to Kelly's office. I don't know if you want to add anything.
Any council members? Louis, would you like to add anything?
No.
And that decision will be made at the January meeting, correct?
Well, that would be up to you, but it will be on the agenda for the January meeting.
Thanks.
Let's put it that way.
We have some upcoming events at Comet, Tony Orlando, on Friday, December 11. And Homegrown Christmas, Tuesday, December 22. For downtown Morganton, a holiday farmer's market on Saturday, December 12, on North Green Street. Carriage rides will continue Friday and Saturdays, with special evenings on Monday and Tuesday, December 21 and 22, from 5:30 to 9 o'clock. And our friend Santa Claus will be in downtown on Fridays and Saturdays through December the 19, from 4 o'clock to 7 o'clock. I'd also like to make the general public aware that on December the 15th at 1 o'clock, there's going to be a workshop presented by the Attorney General's Office on scams and identity theft. This is not telling you how to do identity theft. This is how to protect yourself from identity theft. There's been some confusion. It will be held at the Burke County Senior Center. This Attorney General, Caroline Farmer, she's an attorney with the Attorney General's Office. She gives a great presentation. She'll tell you the latest scams as the Attorney General's Office in North Carolina is aware, and will teach you a way to protect yourself from identity theft. It is free. We would like for you to come and make sure that we are safe during the holidays. I think we have a presentation from Eric Bowman. Sally?
We do.
Eric, would you come forward for our fiscal year 2015 audit presentation?
Actually, I'm going to talk first.
Okay, well.
And then Eric.
Our finance officer, please talk first.
Thank you.
Counsel, I think you have a handout that was given to you prior to the meeting.
I'm not sure why it's not up on the screen. Thank you. A little late. Technical assistance here.
Yes. When they work.
Got it back in there?
Worked earlier.
It's definitely better with the pictures in the graphs. Than just the numbers.
Chad, we don't have it out here. You're going to have to put it on these monitors out here.
Ah, here we go.
Here we go.
Thank you. Okay, so this evening I'm going to begin the presentation, and Eric will kind of wrap us up. I'm excited to be here. You know, this is what I do, and certainly what I am passionate about. So this evening I'm going to bring you up to date very briefly on where we have been during the last fiscal year, and how things just kind of turned out. Okay, so we're going to start out here with lots of pictures, because I like pictures. This first screen shows all of the city's revenues. And again, keep in mind, this is all of our revenues for our fiscal year that ended June 30. Most noteworthy about this particular graph is that 70% of the city's total revenue is generated by the utility funds. Often, folks think that taxes are our largest revenue, and that's certainly a misnomer. 30% of the city's revenues generated by the general fund. Citywide, our expenditures similar to our revenues. 70% of our expenditures are generated by our utility funds, and 30% by our general fund. This is a three-year trend. That kind of shows the story. The boxes are going in the right direction. Revenues last year were up 7% in the general fund. That's about a little over $1.4 million from the previous year, and expenditures were up about 4%. If you wonder where those revenues, which revenues, were up in particular, I'll share that with you. Our avalorum, which is our property tax revenue, was up about $400,000. Largely that's associated with the increase of Morganton Heights. Our utility franchise revenue was up about $200,000. Our sales tax revenue, again largely assuming that that's related to Morganton Heights, was up about $300,000. Comma revenue was up about $60,000. And we had a one-time sale of property, you'll remember, that was $300,000. And I would note with that, that of that, you recall that $240,000 was loaned to the Community House Project. community house project, which will be repaid over time. So let's move on to the next screen. Roughly, this is general fund revenues, roughly half of the general fund revenue is generated by property tax. Again, I think that, that number probably surprises some folks. If you want to see the, as you see these revenue breakdowns, those are really cool accounting terms, but to other folks, they may not mean much. If you look in your, in the book you have, you have the hundred and some page annual report, if you reference page 19, that will give you the detail as opposed to me going through all of the detail with you of which revenues fall in which category. Again, I would point out that here in the three-year trend, that our revenues are going in the right direction, at least for the most part. Forty percent of the, if you look at this graph, I think what's interesting about this, and of course, you know, I think all of this is interesting. Forty percent of our general fund expenditures are in the area of public safety. Twenty-six percent are recreation. Sixteen percent are expended by general government. Seven percent by transportation, which is, which is largely streets. Six percent by sanitation. And five percent of our expenditures are related to general fund capital debt. And if you want to know more about our debt numbers, they start, the explanations of the specific debt, we have start on page 55. Okay? Most of the areas, as you look at this three-year trend, most of the areas saw small, the functions that are indicated here, saw small reductions in expenditures with the culture and recreation area realizing close to a half a million dollar increase. And I thought I would take a minute and just talk to you a little bit about why you see that big increase, because I think it's a little bit misleading. You may recall, because I'm sure that all of you were riveted by the information presented to you in June of establishing a capital projects fund. And so what happened here is that we did a transfer from the general fund to set up the capital projects fund. And that was actually about $700,000 transfer. So that gives you the illusion that the expenditures were up, which, which they were, but actually it was just being moved from one fund to another fund. Because remember in the culture and recreation function, that includes community house comma and our traditional recreation department. Again, I thought, just thought that was fascinating information. This is a really fun screen here in front of you and the only one that I put in there that has numbers. So I want to talk to you about what this means. Available fund balance, that is a really cool accounting term that, that finance directors everywhere love to talk about. So I want to, to tell you that the bottom number there, the $3 million, I want to relate that to you as if it were a checkbook and talk to you about how you understand what it is you're looking at, because it's really important to me that you know what you're looking at. This screen tells you how much is actually available to spend. Works kind of like the checkbook. You see unassigned fund balance. So what that means is that's the number that you start with that you all haven't specifically designated for a particular purpose. Funds that, that roll from year to year that don't, that again, don't have a particular designation. So we start out with that number, the 6.9 million. Okay? And then, you know, I'm gonna associate back to the checkbook. Well, on payday, at least for most city employees, we write, we write the checks for the bills we have in hand. And then we subtract the commitments that we know we have to pay, even though we may not have the bill yet. So that's where, that's where we go to the next step in this puzzle. The appropriated fund balance. What that is, is when you set the budget up this year, you said, okay, whatever we have in reserves, we're gonna anticipate, we're going to assume, well, the budget states that our expenditures potentially are budgeted at 151,000 more than we anticipated revenues to be. So if we're trying to get to the number that tells us how much you can spend, we gotta subtract out the appropriation. And then you see the next number there, which is the encumbered purchase orders or commitments at year end. What that is, is just what it says. It's purchase orders that were open at the end of the year. Purchase orders in North Carolina are legal binding contract. So that's what's open at the end of the year. Now we gotta save the money, because when the goods came in in July and August, we still had to pay for them. So that's why that number is subtracted out. And then the next number, the big number there, is the 15%. And what that is, is kind of like in our personalized, what we might consider our emergency funds. You know, what you put aside just in case something happens. And in, in the City of Morganton's case, you all have directed, directed me, directed Sally to make sure that we keep on hand a reserve of 15%. So when you subtract all those numbers, you end up with $3 million, which is okay for a city our size. Of course, it'd be great if it were larger, but it's okay that it's $3 million. As you can see, it grew from the year before from 1.3 million. So we'll move on here. So now we're gonna move to the proprietary funds. Those are what we call our utilities. And this shows us the breakdown of our utilities. Again, what I find to be interesting about that is that seventy percent of our utility revenue is generated by our electric department. And then basically wastewater, water and compass are pretty much all even, about the same. Ten percent for wastewater, eleven for water and nine for compass. Little bit about the trends here. It's pretty, pretty amazing on how flat they actually are. We had, saw a two percent increase in water revenue, a two percent decrease in sewer revenue. Electric, if you notice right there, is literally within dollars of, of the previous year. And compass the exact same way, within a few thousand. So what that tells us is that, again, we're pretty consistent with that. It's neither good nor bad, I suspect, sort of good. The breakdown for the expenses is 72% electric, 10% water and 9% wastewater, 9% compass. And what you may notice here on this trend, water, wastewater and electric all experienced some increases in expenditures and compass experienced a slight decrease. And I would just simply say there, just as, just as a matter of information, because I really just want you to know, the, the increases come this year, and I, I will not bore you with the great details, but this year in governmental accounting, we have hard, started to have to show on our books the potential for other post-employment benefits. So in each of our utility funds, that was 20, 30,000. So, and in our funds, which we budget so closely, that ends up being significant, our depreciation expense went up. Also in those funds, obviously in electric purchases of power was up a million dollars. But then, you know, what goes along with the expense then obviously is the revenue with that. And in cable, the decrease was directly related to a reduction in supplies and small equipment expense. So what does all that mean so, so quickly? Overall, after, after you do all the math, the utility funds show a, show a increase overall of 657,000, I'm rounding numbers. But once you subtract out the open purchase orders of 1,555,000, it shows an overall net loss of 400,000. However, in the general fund, we showed an increase of about 850,000. And once we subtract the encumbrances out of that, of course, encumbrance of the open purchase orders of 580, it reduces our increase to 585,000. So at the end of the day, the one number I want you to remember from all of my babbling is that we took this humongous 70-some million dollar a year business and we made a profit of 185,000 last year. It's pretty humdrum. But that is the story and I am more than happy to answer any of your questions, because I love to talk about this stuff.
Counsel, have any questions for Karen? John, you look like you're thinking about it.
Oh, no.
Okay.
Did I rassle down on you?
No.
He was stunned, I think.
It was boring.
Okay, Karen, thanks. I believe Eric.
And now Eric's gonna come up and make some comments.
Okay, thank you Karen.
I just wanted to add a couple things to what Karen said. She talked about taxes and I wanted to mention that tax collection rate in the city's 99% is about as good as you can do. And that generated about nine million dollars of revenue and I want to commend Denise on doing a, a really good job with the taxes. She also mentioned Karen, fund balance. Sometimes it's hard to figure out, what does fund balance mean? And just to make it easy for you to understand, the, the undesignated fund balance for the city equates to about four, a little over four months expenditures and reserves. Local government commission says you need one month, that's not near enough. I feel like for governmental units your size, you probably need three months as a minimum. So having four months sort of tells you that you're in good shape. It's not excessive by any means, but certainly adequate. I had one negative, you know, I'm always gonna have some, some negative. Or it's not, I guess not so much a negative as it is a concern, is our long-term debt situation. In 2012, the city's long-term debt was nine million dollars. And at the end of this fiscal year, it was 16.8. Thirteen million of that was utility debt. The annual, what we call principal interest requirements is about two and a half million dollars, which is fairly significant. About 400,000 of that is interest. So if we looked at our utility funds and we carve out electric, because it essentially doesn't have any debt, and we take the current assets minus total liabilities, not current liabilities, but total liabilities, we would have a deficit of about 3 million dollars. So then we could say, well, let's look at it another way. Let's carve out cable, cause you know, maybe you can sell cable sometime down the road, maybe it's not as important. That would leave water and wastewater and we would still have only about 200,000 of surplus. So by my way of thinking, maybe we should not be entering into too many long-term debt situations that would increase our debt. I think we need to have a, for lack of a better term, a moratorium on long-term debt for a while, get that paid down some. I know there's times when you just absolutely have to. State makes you borrow money, you gotta do it. Or, or do an expansion, you have to borrow money to do it. But short of that, I would like to see the, the city reduce that debt significantly next couple of years, just give you some breathing room. And I realize that we don't usually look at current assets minus total debt, so that, or total liabilities, that's sort of a worst-case scenario, but becomes a debt, that's the way you have to look at it, or the way I would look at it.
Let me interrupt.
Yeah.
You know where most of that came from is a, a great big expansion in sewer facility.
Yeah.
And also an expansion in the water facility, which are absolutely necessary.
Yeah, I understand that.
So I just want to add a little bit of sunshine to that bloom.
But even though you have to do it, we still gotta pay that money back. What concerns me with increased debt is increased payback and essentially, or you gotta assume at some point down the line, there'll be increased utility rates, which nobody likes to see. So I guess it's just a, a word of caution. I realize that some of that, obviously you had to do. But it's easy just to go out and borrow money. We need some equipment, we need this, we need that, and I just caution you to look at that carefully.
Any other questions for Eric? I need a motion to accept the audit report.
So move.
And a motion and a second to accept the audit report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Ronnie, we'd like to say one other thing. I always sometimes forget to do this, but the city's got like 144 million dollars of assets. This is a big business, an extremely big business. And of course, we're here as officers a, a long time bothering everybody, but we really appreciate the, the cooperation we get from the city employees. They're super nice and they put up with us for a long time and they're just great to work with and we appreciate it.
Thanks. Thank you. Okay. Sally, North Carolina Municipal Power Agency?
Yes, elections happened in the month of November for the power agency board of directors and Latimer Alexander from High Point was re-elected to that board and Steve Peeler in Lincolnon was elected to that board also. Both of those candidates we supported and look forward to them serving and, and leading in that organization.
We have a lengthy consent agenda. Would you cover those items, please?
Be glad to. The consent agenda before you tonight is actually five individual items. Would include several items that, that I will discuss separately to let you know what they are. We consider those items to be routine in nature. Two sets of minutes from the November meeting on November 2nd, and then a special joint meeting with the Burke County Commissioners held on October the 19th. Tax releases in the amount of 497.86. The first reading of the certification of taxi cab franchises, that will come back to you in January for the second reading to approve those for next year. The consideration and award of bids for equipment and installation of the primary clarifier number two at the waste treatment plant. This is a multi-year project and this is the second part of the project that we started 18 months ago. Contracting to purchase equipment for 155,905 and the installation 268,433. Then the recommendation for a reappointment to the Burke County Tourism Development Authority and that would be Sharon Jablonsky for a reappointment for a term to expire on December 31st, 2017.
Do any council members wish to have any item removed from the consent agenda? Right there, a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, under new business, consideration of waste and wastewater system master plan update with rate study and budget amendment. Sally?
Eric gave the perfect lead-in for this. And yes, John, water and sewer are capital-intensive funds and operations. And we have been in a multi-year process for upgrading those facilities to meet regulations and requirements and to be able to serve water and treat waste in a way that the state encourages us to do. Back in October, October 5th, you had a workshop looking at the process that we began several years ago to convert the sewer plant from an oxygen system, a pure oxygen system, to a more traditional waste treatment facility. The days of needing the pure oxygen treatment have passed us by as our customer base has changed. And in looking at that, and in looking at that fund and evaluating the need for capital, because there are a lot of capital needs in that fund, and Eric is right, there is debt associated with that and obviously you have to pay that debt back. Plus you have a lot of assets that are depreciating. So we have a lot of fixed assets in that fund. More than 10 years ago, we did a master plan. That is a 15 to 20-year plan for capital requirements for both the water and the sewer plant. It is time that we update that, that we look forward, that we do that in conjunction, understanding with what regulations are coming our way, what processes may need to be changed in order to meet those and planning for that. In addition to that, a rate study, looking at how our rates are structured, what is happening in the water and sewer industry that we need to know about so that we understand if our rates are structured in the proper way. They're structured with fixed portions and variable portions. So we need to take a look at that. That was planned for next year in our capital budget and that has been in your capital plan for the past several years. At the October workshop, we talked about the need to move that forward and to begin getting into that so that when we enter into this year's budget season, we have the information we need to make good long-term decisions, not just short-term, but long-term decisions for how we're gonna manage those operations. So we are asking that you consider doing that, asking that you consider a budget amendment, because we obviously didn't budget to do that in this year. That will remove it from next year's capital needs, however. We have a task authorization, which is basically an offer to contract from Freezing Nichols. They are here tonight. Those are the engineers who have been working with us on the upgrades at both of those facilities and looking at our system. This will be the third time in my tenure here that we have looked at rates and master planning in both of these funds. It will be the third engineering group that we have used to do that. It is customary to use the engineers who are most closely related to understanding your system at the time, so that you don't have to go back through learning all of that to get through this process. They have bid 197,250. That will do both master plans and rate studies in both funds. I think it's very important that we do this. We'll tell you that we have budgeted 250,000 in order to do that and that was based on what we paid over 10 years ago to have that done.
Counsel, we'll need to take two motions. I'll entertain a motion, please.
I move to approve and authorize the task authorization from Freezing Nichols to complete a water and wastewater master plan update and rate study in the amount of 197,250.
We have a motion? We have a motion?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? We have another motion, please.
We approve a budget amendment in the amount of one hundred ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to appropriate funds for a water and sewer master plan update and rate study.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Let's get through everything's.
It's hard to find those little patches in.
Okay, next is?
Compass.
Compass. Well, we've got Community House, oh, there it is. Okay, we have consideration of award of contract for the compass consulting business assessment. Sally?
As, as you have just heard, in talking during last year's budget season, we are taking a really deep look at the business enterprises for the city. And we just talked a lot about water and sewer. Would recommend that you consider allowing us to contract with David Stockton, Uptown Services, a consultant in the cable internet telephone business, to take a look at that enterprise, to give us some feedback with our business model, does it need to change? What are those current trends, and, and how do we need to manage that business going forward? He has been interviewed by staff members. We have located him through some discussions with the city of Wilson, that is another municipal system in the state of North Carolina. He is fa- he is familiar with the laws that govern North Carolina systems there, those are different than other states, he works in multiple states. The cost that he has given us for that is twenty-five thousand-plus expenses. Should, the work should be done in about sixty to seventy-five days, would happen after the first of the year, and also give us information necessary for budget time.
Do I have a motion?
A motion to award a contract to Uptown Services in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars plus expenses for a business assessment of the city of Morganton cable antenna system, or compass.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, do we, do we have any idea, it's twenty-five thousand-plus expenses, do we have any idea on how much the expenses are gonna be?
Yeah, those should probably be less than five thousand dollars. He, he will make several trips here, he is in Atlanta, and, and it'll be whatever is required for those trips. But obviously, in today's environment, we'll do some of that via transmitting information back and forth to him, but he will make several visits here, and ultimately, a presentation to, to you all with the results of that.
Sally, I noticed his resume states that he had pricing, revenue analysis, and new product development as part of his resume, and actually helped deliver high-speed internet to two-point-one million households, so that's a pretty good resume.
He does have a pretty good resume. I will also tell you that the National Cable Television Co-op, if I said that right, NCTC, of which we are a member, a lot of small systems are members of that group. He is also one of the consultants that they have vetted, and that they recommend for doing this type of work in systems in a variety of states as well.
Any further comments? We have a motion to award a contract to Uptown Services. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? No. Motion passes. Next on the agenda, I believe, is a contract for the final phase construction drawing of the Community House renovation project and budget amendment. Sally?
This also, you'll recall, is, is a multi-year project. We don't like to do anything that starts and stops in a single year, it seems like. We have been working for several years on the upgrades at the Community House. You'll recall that we've completed the first phase of the renovation, and that was with some infrastructure improvements, kitchen improvements, finished with part two of phase one, which was the courtyard, and we just recently dedicated that facility, and, and that, both of those projects had private support for completing those, to match some of the public dollars. The next phase and the final phase, we have the design work for that, but we don't have construction drawings, so there is no bid or, or no way to get an accurate bid. The fundraising group is interested in knowing what is left, so that they can pursue opportunities, and we don't have that information in looking how to do this. The next phase would include reworking the lobby, relocation and outfit of the restrooms, and that would include making them code compliant and handicap accessible. The ceiling work and some reconditioned floor work in the Cobb and Conley rooms, the creation of the green room bridal suite, and the addition of an elevator. Also includes reworking the basement to meeting rooms, would be added down there with bathrooms, with an access that would be covered for people coming to the building for functions, and allow them to enter and take the elevator upstairs. The Glazer Architecture is the firm out of Asheville that has been doing the other parts of the project, and they have indicated that this would be sixty-four thousand, five hundred dollars to get those drawings, so then we can determine what monies can be raised and where we go from here.
Gentlemen, we have two motions.
I move we accept Glazer Architecture's contract in the amount of sixty-four thousand, five hundred dollars for the final phase construction drawings of the Community House renovation project.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir. This money, is it, now, the way I'm looking at this, this is not, this is city money, right?
Correct. This is city money, and, and these will belong to us whether we proceed with this now or do that later. This is city money, and the second item is a budget amendment, and what that would do is appropriate some of that fund balance that you just talked about, and, and put it into the capital projects fund, which is how we are funding this.
Did we not, at our workshop, discuss the first phase of this being the taxpayers' responsibility, and the second phase of it being fundraised money?
I think that it would be the intention that there would be funds raised for actually doing it, but the architecture and engineering work, even in the first phase, has fallen to us. So I think that would be how this was planned. This is just to get that done, not to do any of the work.
We have to have these in order to get the bids on what it is gonna cost. We have a general idea, but we, until we get the drawings, we can't get bids on the stuff that needs to be done.
Yes, there's even been some conversation, I, I see Ron Martin here, there's been some conversation about approaching a contractor for a contribution, but if they don't have these kinds of, of drawings, then they can't determine if they're willing to do that or not.
Correct.
Sally, I'd like for Sharon to come up, and talk to us about the meeting rooms downstairs, if she could, please. I know some, some organizations may not need a huge room, like, like the Cobb Room. If she could give us at least her idea of what it could be, we're not sure what the architect's gonna say, but at least her, her idea, please.
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor. We actually have some good design drawings, but you can't do bids off design drawings, obviously, 'cause that's just a, a vision. What a lot of people don't realize is that under the Conley Room is the exact same basement size downstairs, and that could easily be split, or is looked at being split into two meeting facilities, along with a storage area that we have to have for the clubs. One room would seat about fifty people, and, did I say Conley Room? Cobb Room.
The Cobb, yeah, may I?
I do it backwards.
The Conley Room, because it's always confusing, is the room that when you go in is on the left that has the wood floor. The Cobb Room is the room that's the whole length of the building on the other side.
Yes. It's the, it's the newest addition, if you will, in the nineteen fifties, being the newest addition. So again, underneath is the equivalent of the same-sized basement. We would like to put a room for fifty people and a room that could be more like your boardroom, if you will, that would hold twelve to sixteen people, again, with the, a storage in the middle. The other key factor is that we get requests for a lot, is that we have a tremendous amount of older citizens that come there. I, I'm happy to say that because of a lot of the new changes, we have attracted the younger generation, but obviously, we still have, everybody ages, and everybody at, at one time or another, you know, you break something or whatever. So we have a real issue with addressing handicap, and by putting an elevator in, a lot of folks don't realize, there is a nice large door in the back that has a ramp that's already built in, that would access the elevator. We can put a awning up that would help in rain, so that some people could just be dropped off and come in. More importantly, as you referred to, Mayor Thompson, is that right now, the Cobb and Conley Room hold anywhere from a hundred to two-hundred and some people. It would be nice that when our clubs that are in, you know, fifteen to fifty people, or fifty to forty people, fifteen to forty-five people, could go downstairs more economically, and then we could hold those upstairs to hold larger facilities.
The, the other idea talked about, when the group that was, was planning the project and talking about it, is the opportunity for training sessions, of which we have quite a few there. But it's very difficult to have any breakout sessions, because basically, you've got two large rooms, and, and the noise doesn't really allow you to do much of that. And so that was part of the thinking from the original group that was meeting and talking about what it could provide.
And even our current clubs, like Rotary and the Pilot Club, and so many of them, they have board meetings before the meeting, and they would like to have a private area to have that board meeting, and that has never been possible.
Thanks. Any other questions for Sharon? We have a motion to accept the contract, and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We need another motion for the budget amendment, please.
I move to approve a budget amendment and a project ordinance in the amount of sixty-four thousand, five hundred dollars to appropriate the transfer of funds from the general fund to the Community House renovation capital project.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next is consideration of entering into a CDBD, CDBG, Community Development Block Grant. I can say it easier, I can spell it. Small Business Loan Agreement with Root &amp; Vine LLC for the purpose of expanding the current restaurant within the Central Business District of Morganton. Sally?
We actually have two items tonight that are small business loan requests from Root &amp; Vine. That has been one of our successes, I would say, in our small business loan program to date. It is a, a restaurant in downtown, as you know, and they have been quite successful since they opened. They did receive a Main Street loan several years ago, and a CDBG, small business loan. It'll, it'll roll off after a while. To, to help with that, they are now in a position where they need to expand, and, and they have property next to them that will allow them to do that. So tonight, you're being asked to consider a thirty-thousand-dollar small business loan from our HUD monies, out of the portions of those we set aside for the small business loans, and that is thirty thousand dollars. We'll tell you that the current one is about to be paid off, and the collateral for that loan will roll into being the collateral for this loan, if you choose to move forward with it. They will be moving into 133 West Union Street, expanding to include forty-nine additional seats, thirty-six beer taps, and a wood-fired pizza oven is the plan, and you have a copy of the plan in here, and, and a list of equipment, and, and what is going to happen there, looking at several new jobs that would be hired, two full-time, I believe, and six part-time. Those numbers are on the Main Street one, because jobs are a part of that requirement. That's what we're looking at. This is the first one.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I move we make a loan in the amount of thirty thousand dollars to Emily Perez of Root &amp; Vine, using monies from the Main Street Solutions Revolving Loans Fund for expansion purposes.
Second. I believe you're ahead of it.
I think you may have gotten ahead of us a little bit there, Mr. Cantrell.
Yeah, there's two of them.
We'll take that one in just a minute, John.
Or we can talk about that now, you want me to talk about it?
Well, just go ahead and talk about it now.
I'll talk about it, 'cause they're all together, how about that? Back in 2010, we received two-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars from the state to do Main Street improvements. It was a Main Street Solutions Fund grant. And as part of that, Morganton was the only Main Street community that received monies at that time that set up a revolving loan program. Even though the state did not want us to do that, we insisted upon doing that, so that we could hopefully spur growth in downtown, create small business, create jobs, and then as we got those programs successful and paid back, we would have money to turn around to continue to do that, and that has proven to be successful for us. Monies have been paid back. We originally loaned out two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand dollars to eight businesses. We have received dollars back. The current balance that we have received back to date are forty thousand, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars and forty-nine cents. This is the second loan request in the amount of thirty thousand dollars that would go into the expansion and purchase of the equipment. We'll tell you that the collateral for this loan, and it would be at three-point-seven-five percent, would be the new equipment, as detailed in the information in your packet, and so there would be collateral for that. So you have two, you have the Main Street, which is one pot of money, and then the CDBG, which is the second pot of money.
Okay, Councilman Cantrell made a motion to use the Main Street Solutions. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. We'll go back to the Community Development Block Grant Loan in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. Do I have a motion?
Somebody else do that.
I move to enter in, into a thirty thousand dollar Community Development Block Grant Loan Agreement with Root &amp; Vine for the purposes of expanding the existing restaurant into the adjacent structure at 133 West Union Street.
A second. A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
See if I can catch up.
Catch up here. Our next order of business, I believe, the consideration appointment to the Burke Development Incorporated Board of Directors. Sally?
Burke Development has been in a process to redo bylaws, and as a part of that redoing, they are taking their Board of Directors from a twenty-four-member board to a fifteen-member board. As a part of that, the city of Morganton, which is a partner and a funder in that organization, will go from three appointments to two appointments. The two appointments, as per the bylaws, will be the mayor, or the mayor's designee, and the city manager to that group. Those would be for three years.
Gentlemen, I need a motion?
Motion to approve an appointment of Sally Sanders, city manager, to the BDI Board of Directors for a term to expire December 2018.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Move to approve appointment of Councilman John Cantrell as the mayor's designee to the BDI Board of Directors for a term to expire December 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, we have some, some consideration of appointments to boards and commission, and I think this one is gonna be the Historic Preservation Commission. Sally?
These are terms that actually have expired, but you continue to serve as long as you're willing, until a reappointment happens. Ken Volz, Dottie Irvin, Joan Malik, and Mary Lou Fer are the positions on here, are the people who have been appointed. Those have been participants, excellent participants, good participation, would express their interest in continuing to serve, three-year terms. The terms would be staggered due to the reappointments. Terms for Ken and Mary Lou would expire November 2017, and the terms for Dottie and Joan would be November of 2018, if you choose to reappoint these. That will still leave one vacancy on this board, that we need someone who's willing to serve.
Gentlemen, do I have a motion?
Motion to reappoint the Historic Preservation Commission, Ken Volz and Mary Lou Fer for terms to expire in November 2017, and Dottie Irvin and Joan Malik for terms to expire November 2018.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We have a thirty-day notice for vacancies on boards and commissions. Sally?
And that is for the Airport Authority. You would need to make that appointment at your jan- You would need to make that appointment at your January 4th meeting, I believe it's the fourth, the January meeting, and that is required to be one elected official and one citizen appointment to that board.
Someone was interested in volunteering. How would they do that?
They would send information to Kelly. Contact Kelly.
Any further business to come before the council? I'd like to wish everybody, including our citizens, a Merry Christmas, and please be safe for the holidays. Sorry, Forrest?
Let's not forget about the Christmas parade at six o'clock tomorrow night.
Yeah, I think Santa Claus is going to be there. Okay, we are adjourned.